I'd like to call the meeting of the Amherst-Pellam Regional School Committee to order, please. And I'd like to welcome my colleagues on the committee. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance this evening. And I'd also like to welcome all of the people who are watching at home. Once again, we have a very busy agenda, and so we would like to get right to work. I'm going to ask Kathryn Appley to call the Amherst School Committee meeting to order.
I'd like to call the Amherst School Committee meeting to order.
And, thank you. And we will wait until Pellam has a full contingent for Debbie Gould to call the Pellam Committee to order. I'd like to, as usual, ask the members of the committee to look at the agenda and to look at the times that are allocated to each of the items on the agenda, and ask if there are any requests to alter the times allotted to each of the items. I do want to make one change to the agenda. Next to fee schedule, we will having the discussion as well as the vote, and the same thing is true with the capital plan. So it's both discussion and vote on those. But does anyone wish to alter the allocated time to any of the agenda items? Michael?
It's not altering change, but just for future agenda items, do you want that the end of the meeting? Or would now be pretty helpful?
Regionalization.
I'm sorry, what?
Under 5B, items for future agendas?
Yes.
What would you like? Thoughts about that? I have an item.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Sure.
Before we get underway with the -- is there anyone else who wishes to refer to the agenda? Before we get underway, just a comment from the chair with your indulgence. Over the course of the last two weeks, a couple of situations have occurred that have reminded me of the importance of remembering that while each one of us was voted individually to the regional school committee, that we are not individually responsible, if you will, for addressing or solving problems that might come before us as individuals. I think we need to always remember that when we are contacted by a member or members of the community with a particular concern, that our responsibility is to convey that concern to the appropriate parties, whether it be the superintendent and/or the larger committee. This past couple of weeks, I've been in a couple of situations where I had to remind myself of that, that I don't act independently, none of us act independently, of the larger school committee. So I just want to share my own personal experiences over the last couple of weeks as a reminder to all of us that when we are approached, that regardless of whatever the issue might be, to bring it before either the superintendent and/or the larger committee. Thank you. I'd like to open it up for public comments. Vladimir, you have two minutes.
The next item was seven fifteen. I was wondering if anybody had anything before we come. I have three comments, maybe I'm only three minutes.
You have two minutes, sir. You have two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay. Buenas noches. Good evening. I'm here to actually direct this committee. I understand that the MSNN, Massachusetts, I mean, the minority sort of national conference was held in Arizona, in Phoenix. And I would like to know, are you aware of the boycott that we signed in 2010, that no town funds or public funds shall be able to be used in the state to conference in Arizona? I just wanted it to know. Okay. Since you don't know, I've got two minutes. I want to direct you to the Select Board homepage in the town website, and look for the June 7, 2010 packet. I figured out you guys didn't know, and for whatever reason, there was a resolution that was presented by me, and there was another groups in terms of this boycott, that is still in order, because SB 1070 passed. So I would like for any one of you to take a look at that. So, and I'm not faulting anyone, but next time that Arizona comes into your mind, think about the thing. And also, I happened to see, thank God, for the ACTV, the forum about the kids talking about Arizona. And I do believe that to make this whole, those kids were put in a position that they couldn't have been arrested. They were put in a dangerous situation. The adults didn't know. They were in Phoenix-Arizona's campus. I just happened to saw it the other day. So they need to know. And when I was in the committee, one of my biggest things for ten years was the current events. For whatever reason, I mean, don't know what happened to that. It helped me a lot when I came to this country as a seventh grader. So take a look at that. I would like for you guys to fix that situation, and let those kids that were put in a dangerous position in Arizona understand what happened there, and what is this whole boycott all about. So go to the Select Board homepage, June 7, 2010 packet, Town of Amherst, and then you'll see the whole nation anti-Arizona. Okay? And real quickly, thirty seconds. I came here about last year to talk about--
Mr. Morales, you have two minutes or up, please, sir. I already gave you more than two minutes, sir.
Okay, so I will say my extra comment, and this is about, we're talking about kids' free and reduced lunch. We're still trying to attend the university to provide them, the ones that have Medicaid, Medicare, for health concerns. They cannot utilize the University of Massachusetts. So I can work with two minutes, but next time I'd like--
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. I'm going to ask Debbie Gould to call the Pellam Committee to order, please. And then we'll go, and then, I'm sorry. I just want to call the committee to order. Bear with you for just a second, please.
I'm going to call the Pellam School Committee to order at 7:10 PM.
Thank you. Vince, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So Vincent O'Connor, I'm a precinct one town meeting member in Amherst. I have two comments. One is that, just off the cuff, because I haven't had a chance to study it, the staff composition, I would urge the committee with regard to the staff composition to have it broken down into full-time teachers, paraprofessionals, janitors. What we hear, say here is we have a staff, sixteen point three percent of staff of color. Well, that might, you might even think that would be an understatement if you knew the janitors. But that's not, that's not who's in the classroom as teachers. And that's a misleading statistic. It needs to be broken down further so you really understand who is teaching the children of this region. Okay? So, second thing is, address the fee, the schedule for athletics. I just want to say, this is, it is a terrible thing that we lead western Massachusetts in the fees we charge. Athletics are not in competition with academics. We have one physical activity trimester required of students and available to students for their entire four years in the high school. One. So that these programs are actually a substitute for programs that used to be offered under the academic rubric, and are now not offered, and they're being charged to participate, and parents, and some parents are insisting that their children go out for athletic activity because they are not going to tolerate them having only one athletic activity in the entire four years. These fees come on top of all the equipment that the kids buy for themselves, and all the transportation that parents provide after these, after the practices and games. These fees are an outrageous imposition. The only good thing is that the free and reduced lunch fees are really low, much lower than the town's fees, and I've spoken to select board members about them, and hopefully they will do something about them. But these fees are really, they need to be viewed in the fact that these sports activities are a substitute for things that used to be offered under the academic program that are not now offered, and that children who participate in these activities, in fact, are not substituting these activities for academic pursuits and so forth. They are substituting these activities for, as we all know, people who have or involved with kids who play sports. They're substituting television, video games, and the ubiquitous cellphone communication. And so what is being lost is unnecessary activity, and what's being gained is important, lifelong activity. So I hope you will consider this when you look at the fee program, and be very, you know, determined to keep the fees down.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jim Luskow. I'm the executive director of Amherst Media. Some of you might have known us as Amherst Community Television, or ACTV. I'm just here very briefly tonight to bring you up to date a little bit about our situation. As most of you know or should know, we've been asked to leave the facilities we've been in since 1991, and that's the Western Mass Electric Company building over 246 College Street. And if you haven't been in there, please come by sometime. It really is much more modern on the inside, as many of you know, than it looks from the outside. But one of the big issues here is that we were looking at the former Fort River Annex Building with the help of the town, since you've deeded that building over to the town, and there's a lot of money that's being delayed through the CDBG issue with the town. So we're taking a different tact, if you will, and I'm not a sale person like Rick, but I think that we really need to. And one of the things that we've done as an organization is we've hired a consultant, Ben Schwartz, who I'd like to introduce to you very briefly, and I know you want to get ahead with your agenda, so thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? I spoke with Mr. O'Brien about this a little bit, but, look, as Jim said, and as you all know, Amherst Media is a public resource. In fact, we are being filmed at the moment by Amherst Media to broadcast these proceedings to the many thousands of people who tune in on a weekly basis as, and this is not just about public access cable, it's not just about governments, it's about distance learning, it's about the whole sort of spectrum of services that are provided by this entity. Now, we had a meeting recently with WMECO in which they use the term mothball, this building. Now, they don't have any specific plans for it. We're not here to ask for your money. We're here to ask for your support, because essentially what we want to do is make sure that we continue into the future to have this resource. We can't be on, you know, constant tenterhooks as to whether we're going to get kicked out, as to whether or not this is going to be viable. Jim has looked at, you know, two dozen-plus options in the area. Nothing is suitable, either in terms of space, in terms of infrastructure, power, internet, for the station's needs. My role is to help sort of develop the community support such that it becomes inevitable, that they allow us to take possession of the building at a fair price, and we are simply here to ask for your support in that effort, understanding the importance of this resource, not just to the school committee, but to the Town of Amherst, and to the seventeen other towns that have access to, you know, ACTV through online. So that's the extent of it, and I understand there's a public meeting law, and this is the appropriate venue in which to communicate with you, but into the future, I hope that we can count on your support for this. And I hope I haven't gone over my time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. There are details to be filled in, but with respect to time, I will leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Will you finish?
Unless there's any questions or any--
Could I just make--
Sure, of course.
I just wanted to make a quick comment to say that Amherst Media has been a wonderful friend of the public schools, and Mr. Luskow has really worked closely with us to be innovative, to take maybe some ideas that were outside of the scope of their current work, and to work with us and figure out a way to make that happen for our students and for our staff. So I would just like to say publicly, the relationship that the schools has with Amherst Media has benefited, I know the schools, the community, providing information for our families and our students, as well as, you know, thinking of other opportunities for kids to be able to take courses. And it's been relatively painless in terms of cost, little to no cost at all for us, and, you know, any way that we can support your viability, we, I personally would, and I know the school district values the relationship as well.
May I add something? To that very point, our conversations with NU and with WMECO have oriented around the fact that this can be a win-win for everybody, okay? You know, if they don't have any use for that building, we as an entity, we as a community certainly do, and so to the extent that they can turn it over to us at a reasonable price, they get a PR benefit, they get whatever tax advantage accrues to them as a result, and they get all the goodwill that comes with being a good corporate citizen, you know? And there is a sort of corollary downside to them, you know, implicitly to pulling the rug out. Now, that's not something that we want to overtly discuss with them. It's now on TV, and that's okay, but, and they're quite aware of that, you know? Everybody that we've spoken to, from, you know, members of Congress, to school committee members, to business, you know, entities, and others who understand the value of this resource, know that this is a community that will stand up for this kind of effort. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Joint Committee. My name is Alyssa Pierce Bonifas, and I am the mother of Marisol Bonifas, who is a member of the Wildwood community now. I had read in the Amherst Bulletin two weeks ago that there was going to be a meeting of just our Amherst School Committee to talk about the Spanish programs. And I don't know if that is this meeting tonight. I couldn't find out the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, it's not for tonight. The topic won't be on specifically, but of course--
But I just decided I'll show up.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can come to the next one, but I just wanted to give you a report from my side, as being a parent at Wildwood and trying to get something off the ground for my daughter and her schoolmates. She has currently six languages in her kindergarten class at Wildwood, and her teacher, Ms. Donna Gagnon, has been very warm and open to having parents come into the classroom and teach the language courses that superintendent and the central administration says they don't have the money for these kinds of programs. So parents are taking it upon themselves to go into the classrooms and do some teaching. Donna Gagnon and Nick Yaffe have allowed us to come into their class twice a month, so it'd be every other Friday, for forty minutes. I have sent a survey home to parents. I got thirty percent response back of parents who want to help out with this effort, and we're going to be teaching Japanese, Spanish, and Hebrew. And a grandparent is actually going to come in the classroom as well. So I'm very encouraged about this. It hasn't, that's telling the good news. The bad news is that I've been down a lot of rabbit holes in the last few months trying to get something off the ground. I did try to do a Spanish club after school, and since the leisure services of Amherst have taken over the after-school programs, I've found the PGO to be very resistant or reluctant to do after-school programming, or funding for after-school programming, because they feel like that's being taken care of by leisure services. So two years ago, when I was asked by the PGO Director, Lucy McMuir, to start a Spanish after-school program on Wednesdays, they're no longer doing that, and they're, now they're saying, well, we don't do any of that. We're not doing that. So I feel like I was sort of sent down a rabbit hole that way, because they've also asked me, the PGO leaders have said, please extend this idea to Leverett, Schutzbury, and Pellam. So I found everybody's email and wrote them, and everyone was very polite and wrote me back and said, we'll think about this, and we'll talk to our community, and never heard back from anybody. And I think this is because it's a political issue as well. We're talking about regionalizing the schools, and collaborating on these kinds of things have political agendas. So I didn't feel like I went very far with that agenda. But I just want to say that I am here as a concerned parent for my daughter, as well as all the students that are in the classroom. Language acquisition is so much easier to come about when you're young, and we have the resources in the schools. It would not take any more money than what's being used already. I wish, I wish I didn't have to go down these rabbit holes. I wish I had a light at the end of a tunnel. Would one of you, at some point, please, give this a consideration? There's many people on my side on this, and, you know, starting of the next year is coming very soon, and in March, the private schools start giving their open houses, and the Montessori school right down the street is going to be offering a first-grade bilingual program. And I have to say, I am really considering that, and I know other parents are too, because we feel like we've been doing this since 2003, trying to come to the school committee and ask you guys to please bring a two-way immersion program to our schools. And it's not a priority. Unfortunately, it's not something that's measured on the MCAS, and until it is, I'm afraid it's not going to be a priority. So I just want to tell you my report. It's kind of dismal. Sorry, but just need to have my voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? If not, I'm going to turn to the next item on the agenda, which is announcements.
Yeah, and I'm actually, we've made kind of an agreement that during joint meetings, I will not do public, you know, announcements for the public. However, I do want to say, and actually Debbie may want to speak to this, because I really don't know what I'm talking about related to this, but the school district does, and we've just started a Twitter, is that a Twitter account? Twitter? And we are now tweeting. I know that. And we welcome you to look on our website, and you'll be able to see that we are trying as a central office to put information on there, at least five items per day is our goal at this moment, and we're getting ourselves started, kind of becoming a little more current. So we hope that everyone will join. Did you want--
Debbie, do you have our Twitter handle?
Yeah, what is it? It's ARMS-- It's ARPSMA.
At ARPSMA. Thank you.
Our handle. Thanks.
We're still all learning the term.
We are, but it, there's been a lot of activity in the office over the past few days with people becoming actually pretty excited about getting information out there in such an easy way. So we, we're working on it. But I thank Debbie and Mike Morris for bringing us a little more current. That's all I'll share tonight.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, why, thank you. I have now a cellphone, and I am tweeting.
The next item on the agenda is the CIC grant approval, so I'm actually, this is an Amherst and Pellam vote, so I'm going to turn it over to Kathryn for this item.
So this is something that we, was presented at the last joint meeting, and, but in order to submit the grant, we need to vote, and then I will sign the grant, and it will be submitted. But I was just, Michael, if you could just remind the committee--
What it is and why it is?
Yes. That would be helpful.
So as part of the regionalization process, there's, we basically need money to hire consultants and then move through the process. So we applied for DESI grant, which we are patiently waiting for response from. We was due a few weeks ago. And that pays for planning. And then the CIC grant, which is from Administration and Finance, is for implementation. And so this would start in April of 2013, and we're asking for money through May of 2014. So the important thing to know, and I think I might have mentioned this last time, but just to underline it since you're going to vote, is that in order to be competitive, we had to write the grant as if there had been a decision to proceed, which is not that we've made any decisions to proceed, and we've got a process in place, but that in order to write the grant, we won't have a chance to submit something after we know, so we have to sort of do it prospectively. If there's a decision not to proceed, then clearly we won't accept the money and move forward. But the deadline for submitting is this Friday. We just had a pre-meeting to review it. Schutzbury and Leverett have both signed, and the way it's working is that the District of Amherst is the lead for the four towns, and so each school committee on behalf of the district, and each select board chair for the towns has signed. And so Schutzbury and Leverett, both select boards and school committees have signed, and then Amherst and Pellam will come up to doing it today. And I think Maria, and then Andy Steinberg, who's Chair of the Planning Board, would sign it as well. And it's basically just to show support, so everyone's in, so they know that we're not, one town is not going renegade and applying for four of the towns by themselves.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Michael?
Then can I take a motion for the Amherst Committee to approve the submission of the grant?
I'll make a motion--
It has to be just Amherst.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thanks.
And I will take a motion for the Pellam--
My turn. I'll make a motion at the Pellam Committee to submit the, or sign it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the, any discussions? All those in favor?
Thank you all.
We'll get this out within two days? One day? Two days?
A little choreography, that's great.
Yes, excellent.
Michael, while we're on the regional planning board topic, do you want to make, use this moment to share any--
Only that our next meeting is this Thursday, if people want to come and find out where we're heading. I think that's really the big thing at this point.
Thank you.
Seven o'clock?
Well, six o'clock for the tour.
Oh, yeah, six o'clock for the tour and Fort River.
My Fort River.
Yes.
Thank you, Michael.
And Debbie has the form for you to sign tonight, Kathryn, so you can take care of that. And Debbie took care of hers already.
Before we move on to Kathy, just once, there's a container of warrants here. No one will be allowed to leave until they're signed, so please, your keys are under lock and key. You will not be allowed to leave until you sign these. Kathryn, you're next.
Thank you.
Well--
I don't know. Do you want to, you can turn it, I think.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Thank you for asking me once again to present this report, which is typically done annually. What I'd like to do is go through the components of the report with you, and I have some things I'd like to add. I'd like to feature some things, and also identify some challenges that we face. So let's get started. The first page that you've probably read is pretty self-explanatory. I'd like to move to page two and talk about our comparison data. I've presented this chart before, which you can find on the DOE website. I've noted the website address on the bottom of the page. And you, these are the percentage of the staff of color, and you can see that Amherst and Amherst and Pellam, Amherst-Pellam are, again, in the top ten of these districts. Now, having said that, there's four hundred districts in the state of Massachusetts, and three hundred and thirty-seven of these report that their teachers, their staff of color is less than ten percent of their total staff population. When you look at this closer, you can see Boston has forty-one percent staff of color, Cambridge at twenty-one, Amherst coming in next at nineteen, then Springfield, Lincoln, Sudbury. When I looked at the data this year, I looked specifically at the teachers of color and how they are reported by us to the state and by every district in the state of Massachusetts. When we look at Amherst, we can see that we're falling in the top three of percent of teachers of color in the state. And when we move down to Amherst-Pellam, we're about down there at number six in the state. So having said that, we're paying attention, and we're doing okay. We have a lot more work to do, and in fact, we've lost ground this year from prior years in Amherst. In region, we have slightly increased our staff of color. This chart also has deleted the seventy-two charter schools in the state, many of which are largely, have large populations of staff of color, like the Chinese charter school, and many of the charter schools in Boston. When we continue, we can look on page three, and when I, when I identify the applicant pool, and you'll see in that chart in the center of the page, that seventy-two percentage of our applicant, percent of our applicants declare themselves to be white. And we have fourteen, almost fifteen percent who are undeclared-- And we have 14, almost 15%, who are undeclared, and I'm going to guess that those are largely white individuals as well. So, when we look at that, 87% roughly of our applicants are white, and in fact, we hired about 87% of that applicant pool. Any questions so far? This is a lot of data, and I apologize for that. I try to intermingle it with other information as well. The chart on page four shows our total staff, our total staff of color and the percent staff of color in each of our districts. In Amherst, there's 15.8% staff of color. Pelham, 3.8, and region, 15.7. This is all of our staff, all, all of our groups combined. Those who are contracted, not those who are temporary or time-carded folks. I break that data down further by job type. So, our AFSMI group, the top, at the bottom chart, the top line, shows to be 22% staff of color, our administrative group at 20%, Unit A is teachers at almost 14%, Clerical at almost 17%, Paraprofessional at 17, and our non-unit administrative and support staff, largely central office, is at 6.7%. And then we can look on page five at a summary of a number, over a number of years of where we are. And this is where we have lost some ground. You can see over time since 2008, the percentage increase in Amherst Region and Pelham of students of color. We're up 1% over last year in Amherst, and up, I'm sorry, since 2008, and we're up 6% in region since 2008. We've lost 5% in Amherst since 2008 of our staff of color. This is all staff, again. And in region, we've gained 2%. In Pelham, we're up 7% students of color since 2008. Again, I break it down in another way by building with students of color and specifically teachers of color. So, Crocker Farm at 18.6, Fort River 11.3, Wildwood 15.9, Pelham 4.3, the middle school at 18.3, and the high school at 12.7%. Lastly, I finish with some news from the Human Resources Office about what we're up to. And I note specifically, for many years, there was an educator employment fair at the university, which was discontinued last year. We, so we decided we would conduct our own, which was well-attended, and in fact, we hired some people. The principals were awesome. We had representatives from each school doing pre-interviews of people. They had to apply through our partnership with School Spring, as all our applicants do. And that went very well. We're planning another one. It's scheduled for April 2nd this year. We've invited districts also from across the state. We have a commitment from Andover now, and also from Needham to come. And we'll be reaching out to Elms and all the area colleges to have their placement offices there as well. So, we're excited about that, and perhaps we'll send you a reminder, and maybe you can attend. It was really a great event last year. I've included here where we advertise. We're always looking for ideas about advertising. Certainly, we're using online whenever we can, and we're trying to be efficient about our advertising dollars. I've provided information for you about our mentorship program. And I also want to note that many school districts now are considering expanding their mentorship program from three years to five or even more. And there seems to be some correlation in increasing that mentorship period towards retention of staff and also student achievement. And in fact, the student achievement numbers tend to be fairly significant. So, over the next several months, we'll be looking at that and seeing if we want to modify our mentorship program beyond that first three-year period, when of course, then our staff become professional status, and how can we support them beyond that in a more formal way, so that they're not, you know, they get that badge of being professional teacher status. But they still need support beyond that, and I don't think we're as effective as we can be in providing that. I've also provided you some information about the effective budget cuts over the year in exiting staff, and a summary since 2009 of why teachers have left our school district. 104 have, have left us since that time. A couple of things that I also want to point out. I wrote something here, and it's important, it's very important, I think, for our district to recognize the amount of special education teachers that will be retiring over the next few years. There's 88 special education teachers here, and I'm expecting almost 30 of them to leave within the next one to four years. That's very significant, and it's very hard to find well-qualified special education, not just teachers, but specialists, OTs, PTs, autism folks. It's really very challenging. We've already reached out to one of the area colleges to talk to their placement offices about how we can work together to fill these vacancies. Can we come and, and speak to your students in your classes as they're considering their future plans? And we'd like to invite them to our classroom, so they can see the challenges and the types of students that we're now working with in our buildings. It's very challenging, and, you know, certainly concerning that we're losing this amount of staff in a very short period of time. So, one of the things we looked into doing was providing a training opportunity here in Amherst through Elms College to provide BCBA training. Elms was wonderful. They were here. They're very interested in offering this program. And we tried to figure out a way that we could provide an incentive to staff to do this, to participate in this. So, if they take this coursework over the two- or three-year period, and if they succeed in passing a very challenging BCBA certification test, we're going to reimburse them 50% of the cost of that tuition. And we know that their capacity will increase the minute they start these courses. We'll have, we have a cohort of Amherst people interested. We've also reached out to our area schools to see if we can fill that, that class with, with people. We should know by the end of next week whether we're going to be able to run it and begin it in January. It's pretty exciting for us, and I think it's a partnership that makes a lot of sense. And, and I also think there's lots of other opportunity there. We're starting with BCBA, but we may go beyond that and look into other areas as well to, to enhance all of our, our capacity.
Is BCBA?
It's.
Board-certified.
Board-certified Behavior Analyst, yes. Rachel, again, as has she has for the past few years, Rachel Bowen, the Assistant Director, is part of the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee. There was a statewide meeting held in our district last week, which was very successful. And Rachel's involvement with that certainly helps us keep apprised of trends that, throughout the state, and this is, she was appointed at the, by the Commissioner of Education. One area that we're also going to be working on that is not mentioned in this report is the area of substitute teachers. And this is a significant issue in our district. On an average day, we have between 40 and 60 subs in our district. On an average week, we have between 300 and 400 absences of staff. So, some of those are full days, some of them are partial days. What we're launching is a program to evaluate how our substitutes are doing. How are they delivering instruction in the classroom? We're going to be surveying teachers and administrators to find out, and we want to make sure we have the best possible people in front of our children every single day. So, we'll be working on that. We'll let you know how that goes. We may have to expand our substitute pool right now. We have 117 active subs in our pool at the moment. And we are, we're just going to try to focus on that this year, so we can do everything possible we can from our HR office to enhance student achievement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very informed report. Comments or questions through the board? Lawrence?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy. This was very comprehensive and very accessible, too, so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Just two questions. The online and print recruitment efforts in the past year, do we have a sense of which of those have been most effective?
Only, only anecdotally, I would say. There is no, there's no checkbox on our application, on the School Spring application, to say, how did you learn of this vacancy?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. And then the second question is, under exit interviews, there's, you state that the form has been amended to reflect common themes that emerged?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a sense of what those common themes are?
We do, and I can send you that information. I mean, largely, it is, you know, it goes to personality issues. It goes to school culture issues in some respects. So, and what I want to say is, those themes get further divided when you're talking about the category of individual leaving, and by that I mean, is it a paraprofessional? Is it a teacher? And so, another thing I'd like to do this year is, is modify those exit interview forms so that they're streamlined towards that individual. And then they pick up those themes, if you will, from the teachers exiting, paras, clerical, et cetera.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you as well. It's really comprehensive and really helpful, and I think accessible, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
As I flip the pages, you seem to answer the questions that were coming. I had two questions. Well, I guess I would first say, at least from the state rating, it seems like we're doing well. And I think, as you suggest, also, there's more we could be doing. So, the, I guess the first question for us as a school committee is, it seems like in order to do well, it's either recruitment or retention. So, is there financial needs? I mean, advertising is expensive. So, is there things, if we're going to put money where our mouth is, that we should be considering as we go into budget season? That'd be question number one.
It's hard for me to answer that question. The pool of candidates of color is small. The educator prep programs, when you look at the enrollment of students of color, it's low. So, we're struggling with Boston, with Arlington, with, with all of these districts to, to hire staff of color. So, is there more we can do? Yes, I think there is. I think we can work more, more diligently on making these connections with the placement offices locally. I don't think we've done a great job of that in the past. I think we do attend conferences, and we do attend recruiting fairs that are geared towards teachers and individuals of color. We have attended in the past, gone to the Historically Black College Conference, and we, it's a fabulous experience. The migration of individuals is not towards Western Massachusetts. So, when you go to these, however wonderful they are, and we learn a lot, but, you know, it's a struggle.
So, it's not a resources thing necessarily, which is, I guess what I was asking?
Yeah, I don't necessarily think it's a resources issue. And we continue to do our work in human resources by identifying every applicant who's an individual of color, who is certified and qualified to do a position, and we make sure that individual gets, gets an interview at the very least, if not a job with our district. We also go a little bit further by hopefully catching every one of our graduates of our high school, and hope that those individuals, who are certified and qualified to do a job, get the opportunity to interview in the district that they graduated from. So, we think it's very important. We've helped our graduates with their resumes. We help them routinely get certification, even if they don't come to work here. We do everything we can to support our community.
Can you pass one quick?
Just on the exit interviews, it says that people who are exiting can have an exit interview if it's requested, but do people know that they can request it?
Yes, a couple of our principals do without, as part of their routine, they interview people automatically. Everyone knows, and in the letter, of their exit letter, it says, if you would like to meet in person, you're welcome to do so, and here's the contact information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For your presentation, I agree with everybody. It was comprehensive and easily digestible. I just had a question about the BCBA course. Would that be something that a classroom teacher could take to move into becoming a special ed, in, doing special ed in the classroom?
We have interest from mostly special education teachers at this point, but there are others as well. There are classroom, there are other types of specialists who are also interested. We also have some paras, and we're proud to have many very, very well-qualified paras, many with master's degrees, who are also in this cohort.
Could I add one thing to that? Also, you know, it, going through the courses, whether the person completes the full sequence or not, anyone, whether it's a teacher, a paraprofessional, or specialist, special educator, comes out with increasing their repertoire of skills with working with a variety of students who, who need additional specialized supports. So, even if, say, a classroom teacher does not want to go through, you know, the entirety and become board-certified, just coming out of that course, they're coming out with such greater capacity for working with our kids, which is wonderful.
Yeah. We're very excited about this.
Yeah, it's amazing.
We're just hoping it's going to get launched. We have the minimum amount of students we need to get this off the ground. We're close. Yes.
Trevor?
I want to share my thanks about this report. It is, it is comprehensive, and I understand the challenge we have in terms of our small applicant pool. And so, I just want to give kudos for just the work. I want to pause and be careful about considering how good we are at being third in the state.
That's right.
It just means that, you know, everybody has the same problem and is working with the same pool, and we're just doing at least as good as the best, too.
That's right.
But that's still, you know, we still have to consider what is good. So, here at the end of the report, when I look at the Advisory Council describing being put in place to respond to significant changes in demographic needs, I want to make sure that, get a sense from you what our demographic needs are, and what we're willing to offer to somebody who can meet those needs. In other words, I want to put in sharp focus exactly what it is we need from an applicant, and then put in sharper focus how we could recruit an applicant, what we have to offer. Because I agree, I went to a historically black college, and before I had a wife and children, it would be hard pressed to convince me to move here to teach. So, I want to, I want to, you know, know what we're offering to the small applicant pool to be competitive, and exactly what we need them to, what do we do, what, what exactly is it? Not just hiring people.
Well, and, and that is part of the challenge, too. We have a negotiated contract with our teachers, and we are limited as to what we can offer above and beyond that, that contract. So, in an ideal world, we might be, sorry, I'm losing my voice, supporting moving expenses, for instance. We might be bringing, paying for people to come to our district to interview from out of state. We're not doing that at present. That's a funding issue. I think that, you know, even outside of the contract, that, that would be significant, possibly. So, you're right, there are lots of challenges here.
So, the question is, is it worth it for us to do that? What are we asking them to? In other words, we want to hire somebody to help us respond to significant demographic needs, changing student needs, changing district needs, and changing desegregation plans. All that sounds, what's the word?
That's RIAC.
Nice on paper, but what does that actually mean?
Right, and this is the mission of RIAC, the Racial Imbalance Advisory Committee, the statewide committee, to identify these things, feed them back down to the districts to help them map their plan for making these changes. We don't have all of that information at this time. This is an ongoing study that, that has been commissioned by the Commissioner to perform.
Shabazz?
So, I make no, and people who know me know that where I started really getting concerned and wanting to be more involved with the schools here in Amherst is when a young man in our high school, that the principal, Mark Jackson, later told me, when I went to meet with him about these issues, said it was his neighbor, lived across the street from him. But a young African-American man wrote an op-ed, a piece that was published in, in the Gazette, I think, maybe in that paper. And he really talked about a sense of alienation, of having a lack of any teachers of color that he could look at. And I don't mean coaches, I don't mean janitors, I don't mean, you know, people who, truant officers, or whatever they may be called here. I'm talking about actual teachers in the classroom, standing before you, helping you with your math, helping you, you know, helping you learn the English language, helping you learn chemistry. There was no one. And that and other factors. And that and other factors he went on to discuss, talked about a real sense of alienation. When I asked my own son, he says, "Well, yeah, Dad, yeah, that's absolutely how it is." And that's when I went down and made an appointment to meet with Mark Jackson and start trying to find a way how I could do whatever I could, just as a citizen, as a parent, as a whatever, to be involved. And that has led me all the way onto this, on the path to being right here in this seat where I am before you. So, I come at it from that story, from that experience, to say that what I feel is, we need a strategy here. We need not just more, you know, we got to find a way to take the data and do more data, if we need more data, but then to figure out a strategy of how we're going to do something to move from forty-one percent, forty-two percent people of color in our district, and fifteen percent broadly staff of color.
You're right.
You got to find some way to, you know, and let alone whatever the teachers are, if it's three percent teachers, you know, we got to find some way, and I don't know whether it's three percent or even zero point three percent, if I don't have the disaggregated data to know who in the actual core academics are teachers of color.
Okay. So, I have provided you with the teachers of color. I have not provided you, and I can, with the teachers of color in core academic areas. So, I think we are at fifteen point three percent teachers of color in Amherst and in region, fifteen point eight. And those are teachers, those are in Unit A. I think your point is very well taken, and there are challenges. And one of those challenges is that our population of students is also declining. And so, we're not replacing teachers at the same rate that we were some years ago. I also want to point out, when you look at that chart on page two, and we look at Boston and Cambridge and Amherst, and I'll just take the African-American teachers, that the number that we're talking about, I've provided you with the percentages, but what is the number? So, in Boston, African-American, there are nineteen hundred and twenty-three black teachers. In Cambridge, there's a hundred and thirty-eight. In Amherst, there's twelve. And we're number three. So, I think that illustrates, you know, where we are here. And in Cambridge, there's fifty Asian staff members, and Amherst, there's ten. There's four thousand white teachers in Boston, almost a thousand white students in Cambridge, and two hundred and twenty-five here. So, there's a huge gap, and there is an incredible amount of work to do, and there is, in fact, a shrinking applicant pool, and there is a shrinking opportunity because of the decline of population of our students. Turnover is not as great as it was. And we're committed in human resources to doing everything possible, and we'll take your suggestions to increase our traction as a district to staff of color, our traction as a community to staff of color. And we're going to continue to work to make this, to bring that gap, if you will, as narrow as we can possibly bring it. We're holding, but we're not growing at the rate we would like.
Rick, Gray Report, one of the best we get, I think. If I could just add, suggest you add one other piece of data, and that would be information on how many were hired and how many left, like, let's say, over a trailing five-year period. If you take, for example, on page four, the APEA-a teachers line, and you've got forty-nine staff of color, that might be forty-nine because we hired zero and zero left, or it might be forty-nine because we hired forty-nine and forty-nine left. In the first case, in the first case, it would be like a zero churn rate, and the second case, it would be like a hundred percent churn rate. And if you did that for the staff of color and the white staff in these different categories, it would help determine what, how much of the problem is retention versus.
That's a good suggestion.
That's a good suggestion, thank you.
Michael.
Just a quick request, I think, building on what I heard Trevor and Shabazz say. Is there, with the RIAC?
RIAC.
RIAC. Is there written-up findings? It sounds like it's an ongoing process, but in terms of either strategy or more substance, like, is that something that you could provide the report to the committee?
I can, and I can actually invite, if it's, you know, the will, your will, I can invite Rachel to come and talk as co-chair of that committee, what, you know, very specifically what their work is on the national, on the state level.
Yeah, I'm just saying, even just minimally, is there something written that sort of says, you know, at the state level, this is what we're identified as the challenge, and these are some facts or strategies, and that would create a little bit more texture?
Yeah, I can absolutely provide more information in that regard.
Can I ask a question? Shabazz, did I see your hand?
On page six, with respect to outcome of the fairs and pre-interviews we hired, and you mentioned those that you went on to hire.
Right.
And again, my question came there was, this could have been a moment to report how many were underrepresented minorities in, as an outcome at hiring. And then finally, also with respect of, well, I'll just stop on that.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, one thing we probably want to check on, because my understanding, RIAC each year has a specific charge to, charge or two, to explore and report out on, based on their mission. Like, one year it was, I think, increasing students of color in high-level, like, APP courses. In another, it was around family engagement. We're using their rubric for, to rate our schools around family engagement with the schools. So, I'd be interested to see what their charge is specifically this year, and if it is addressing any of these issues, or if they've addressed any issues specific to hiring.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Anyone else? Trevor, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think that's important, to look at the mission of RIAC, but kind of piggybacking off of what Shabazz said, as representatives of the local community, I think that we should come up with what we think the issues are. So, Shabazz has very clearly stated, the issue is that children of color feel as if they are alienated, because they don't see anybody that's teaching them. So, that's an issue.
Yes.
So, that would be a response to what I'm saying, one of our needs would be. But, you know, as a group, as a body, we could come together and say, looking off of the things you decided, perhaps, family involvement is an issue. And we decided that's the case. So, now we will put an eye towards finding, even if it's a small pool, let's find somebody who has some background in that, and put them in a position that can affect that. So, what I'm saying is, we're coming up with a strategy. The first thing is to decide, as a district, how we just meet in this, rather than just meeting these general terms of diversity. We want to not be diverse for the sake of diversity, but be diverse for the benefits diversity brings. So, one benefit would be the students that we have, that are forty-one percent of our population, are not alienated. That's a benefit.
Right.
That's what I.
Absolutely.
Anyone else in the committee?
One thing I would say is a concept I've been reading a lot about, mainly at the higher ed level, but as an idea of inclusive excellence. And that is by exploring the relationship between creating an inclusive environment, and I mean, not only with race, respect of race and ethnicity, but gender, with respect to different abilities, disabilities, or special needs, with respect to all of the kinds of differences we have in our community, that when we are inclusive, and inclusive in our administration, inclusive in our teaching force, inclusive in our curriculum, that this is part of our representation as a high-quality school district, as a school district of excellence. And so, we kind of begin to build a strategy around how do we achieve the kind of inclusive excellence we'd like. And so, for example, as you're saying, yes, hiring, and that may be only a small part of the strategy, because if the turnover is such that we don't have many opportunities that even come from hiring, well, okay, we look at how do we create smart goals within that small bit of change that we can affect through hiring. But then along with that comes looking at the, not only the smart goals with respect to the hiring and strategy, but things like, what is the, what is the welcome when, you know, we are recruiting, and, you know, and how do we utilize who we have in doing some of this work? I'm not sure if Rachel herself is an administrator of color, but, you know, what do we have within our administration team? And then finally, it's also to look at, as we approach negotiations with our union, I'm sure our teachers themselves might have strong principles within their mission, and within our, within their unions, might have strong principles about wanting a more inclusive climate. So, how, within our contract negotiations, do we perhaps work together with the union to create the kinds of incentives, or the kinds of things that we talk about that can help us with recruiting, when we do get a chance to recruit more diverse hiring?
I recently heard a speaker, I was at a conference, and he was a former principal in, I think it was Newark or Jersey City, and he talked about the attitude gap, not the achievement gap. And as a former principal, when he was, in front of his staff, every week, they would get together and he would talk to the teachers about, where are you in your craft? What are you doing to welcome every student to your classroom every day? What biases do you have that are standing in the way of the achievement of the students here? It was very interesting. I have passed his name and information along to the superintendent, and along to Marta Givada, who are more closely focused on these things in terms of the teachers. But it was very inspiring to hear this man talk, and the level of achievement that he attained in his building because of the way he not just managed the students and inspired the students to achieve, as much of that work is going on here right now, but, and more can be done, of course. But it was also the focus that he had on the staff, and how he inspired staff on a daily basis to hone their craft, to welcome every student, to look inside themselves to be the absolute best teacher they can be. And he also had quite a focus on families, and getting families into the school, and involving them as well. And, you know, that triumvirate, triumvirate of effort really did pay off in that district in a very big way. So, we're hoping that we can get there as well. We're taking steps, and maybe not fast enough, certainly not fast enough, given the numbers that I'm sharing with you today, that that deficit is still great, and we are, we are working on it as much as we can to improve in every aspect we can. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? If I may, just one item.
Sure.
Been a good deal of talk about applicants and hiring on that particular end. Trevor's comment in particular struck home in terms of, not sure if this was his intention, but affirming an impression that I have as a white resident of this area, that this may not be the most hospitable area for people of color, for a variety of reasons, and probably ones to gamble, who knows how many there are. And so, that remains, I think, something that perhaps might be out of our control. But on page seven of your report, you identify an area that I think is very much within our control. At the very bottom of the page, if we're lucky enough to attract and hire people of color, we may still have a problem retaining them. And I'm wondering what recommendations or suggestions you might make to the committee that would address what appear to me to be some structural impediments to retaining people. In other words, they may get a pink slip early on in the school year, for whatever reason, but probably budgetary, okay?
Right.
And then, for obvious reasons, they're compelled to make a decision that's best for their family. And then, we might not be able to get back to them until long after they need to make a decision.
Right.
Those are, to me, structural impediments, okay? Apart from the union contract, which I could envision having some relevance to this matter, in your experience, are there any solutions to that dilemma that you, as a committee, might be able to make independent of collective bargaining?
Perhaps funding independent, I've thought a lot about bringing back, for instance, retired teachers to serve as mentors, really safe mentors for our new staff, all staff, staff of color and white staff. So, while they do have a mentor who is a teacher in the district, they don't have someone who, I'm sure, they can feel one hundred percent confident that their challenges are not necessarily being shared with administrators. I think having a wonderful retired teacher working side by side, as, either over the phone, by email, or in person, sitting with these individuals, being a resource for them, I think might be invaluable. That mentor program is very structured the way it is, and it's wonderfully valuable, and it creates a cohort of individuals who can also reach out to each other. I think having sort of a non-employee in term, if you will, working closely with individuals, assigning them as sort of an auxiliary mentor, may have some merit, and will help those staff who feel isolated in the classroom, or isolated with a tremendous amount of IEPs to manage by themselves. It's one thing that I think we could do that may be, maybe we could pilot a program to assist staff. You're very, very, very correct about the timing of budgets and how things work, and our deadline of April fifteenth. And I have to be honest, if we, if we are aware that a staff member is at risk of losing their job, we're talking to them long before April fifteenth, because we want that individual, you know, to be, have a, have secure employment. We don't want them out unemployed at the end of the year. I think that's the most responsible thing to do as a district, to get that pink slip on the fifteenth. But it's not a surprise to them on the fifteenth. They've heard about it, well before the fifteenth, that it's a possibility. And the budgets are decided so late that those individuals during that time are absolutely going to look for alternative employment. We hope to retain them, we keep in close contact with them by email, in person, find out how they're doing, and reassure them as we can. But it's not something that's an absolute until sometimes as late as mid-June.
So, I guess your answer then is, there really isn't much wiggle room there, other than maybe looking for as substantial a support slash mentoring program that we can put together?
I'd like to give it some more thought, but I don't, I do think that that is one strategy that may help, that may help people. They feel comfortable in their buildings, I hope, and we do connect with them. I think having sort of a master teacher by their side, who's been sort of in the trenches, can do nothing but support our new teachers.
I know it's only one person that you mentioned in this report on page seven here, a teacher of color who wanted to stay, and I'm hesitant to extrapolate too much from one person. Nevertheless, that does run counter to the notion that this may not be the most hospitable environment for individuals or families of color, not just at school, but the community at large. And so, it seems that we really need to start thinking out of the box, once we have people here. What can we do? What steps can we take that maybe we haven't even thought of yet to retain people, particularly if they're good teachers?
Right, naturally. And I, you know, I'd like to give that some thought and come back to the committee. I'd also like to come back, given the interest, and summarize our exit interviews more specifically, talk to you about, you know, what are people finding? What, how do they find the environment? How do they find the cultural acceptance? There are comments in there that are not necessarily wonderful to hear, and that's okay as well. So, I'd like an opportunity to come back and talk to you about that.
Please do, thank you.
Speak the truth and shame the devil.
Michael.
So, your comments just confused me. So, what I heard, and this is, I guess, for the budget subcommittee, was that there's possible traction about investing in an expanded mentoring program that's worth looking into. And the thing that we don't have control over really is the budget timing, because that's state-based. So, there's, there is one thing that we can look into, and then a structural thing that we probably can't set.
That's what I heard.
I also just, I think, from having the experience of hiring people from outside of this area now for a few years, it really is, because, you know, I've been in the area for a while myself, as in my adulthood, I see people come in, and it's very much, regardless if it's a staff of color, or, you know, a staff who's been in a district for a lot of time, or a staff who's been in a district for a brief amount of time, there is a culture shift. It's like coming from outside of this area into this area and working, people at times really feel like a fish out of water. So, I think that there are a lot of pieces of Amherst, and not to say
there are a lot of pieces of Amherst, and not to say that it's the most unique community, but it is very unique, and there are, there are aspects of our school community which, um, I see people come in and kind of struggle with a little bit. So, whether that's a positive or a negative, it's, it's, it's not even that I have to qualify whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, it just is. Um, so I think it's paying attention to, what does it mean to transition from, you know, a larger urban system, or a system, um, from Georgia, or from New Jersey, or, and I'm seeing people come in, and there's, there's a difference. Um, and then how do we then help people to make that transition on multiple levels? And then, is, is really tricky.
Well, and there, there are many, many, many districts who, who conduct a much more intensive, um, entry process than we do, and I've thought often, and forgive the military reference, but of a boot camp sort of situation that is a week or 10 days before the start of school, where we would bring in our new teachers, working with veteran teachers, and there is, you know, a cost, lots of planning, but a significant cost to that.
Yeah, but there is a cost.
But it sets people up for strong footing to, when you start, when kids walk in and you're in it, you don't have to try to navigate the, the differences in the, the environment and the community to the same degree.
That's right.
I think it's a great idea, actually.
Shabazz and Trevor?
Brother Chairman, I do, I don't know if I need some form of motion, but I do encourage you, as you look at the calendar in future, if we've got a, a weeknight, if we've got a, you know, uh, that, consider, uh, looking at inviting Rachel Bowen to come in.
Truly noted. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify and emphasize what Maria has just said, it sounds like she heard me loud and clear. And Kip, I didn't want to give you the impression that I was suggesting that this is especially uncomfortable for black people, or just uncomfortable for anybody. And Maria seemed to have heard that loud and clear.
Yes.
Fresh out of college, you would have had to have convinced me to stay here. And, and that was the point I was making, not that it is particularly, you know, uncomfortable for me because I'm black, or because I'm handicapped, or because I'm just a cool guy.
Exactly.
It's just, this is a culture shock, does anybody move?
It is, it is.
That last statement is, is in the minutes.
It's on public record.
Just sign him "cool guy", yes.
Any other comments or questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Kathy, thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
Much appreciated.
Really appreciate it.
And we will expect you back at your convenience.
Now, Kip, I think that Pelham, the joint meeting, Pelham would like to adjourn so that some Pelham members can, or one can exit.
Does anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the Pelham meeting?
Who wants to leave?
All in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned at 8:15.
Bye Debbie, thank you.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thanks, Debbie, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to move on to the...
Should we just adjourn Amherst too? Is there a reason to keep Amherst open?
No, you might as well.
Not really.
I make a motion to adjourn the Amherst meeting, second.
All those in favor? Excellent. Amherst meeting is adjourned at 8:15.
Thank you.
Great.
Moving on to the next item on the budget, excuse me, on the agenda, the FY14 budget. The Budget and Finance Subcommittee met prior to this meeting for purposes of making recommendations to the larger committee regarding both the capital plan and fee schedules. Um, I'm going to ask Rick, who is Chair of the Subcommittee, to initiate, to begin the conversation. Rob, you're here as well to answer questions, perhaps from the larger committee. Um, but Rick, if you want to get us started?
Okay, sure. So, in your package was this thing here, which has a lot of colors on it and all. Uh, the one change from what you received in your package is, and Rob's going to hand those out now.
Thank you. I have one, I'm good.
We have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure. So, the one change from what you got in your package is that $65,000 in that first line item of developmental study classroom in fiscal year 14, otherwise everything's the same. Um, where you see a dotted box, what that means is that the funding in a prior year, like in fiscal 13, is moving to fiscal year 14. So, like, for example, the $100,000 that was going to be spent in 13, on that first line item, is really going to be spent in 14, so for a total of 165 in 14. We don't move the number just because it stays in the 13 budget, because it was approved then, but the cash won't actually get spent until 14. Um, so, a lot of things that we had planned to do in 13 had to move because we just couldn't do it all. Um, one of the biggest things we did, of course, is in 12, the, uh, the replacement of the windows and doors in the middle school, that was a pretty huge undertaking. Um, so, so what the, this Budget Subcommittee recommended, um, four to zero with one abstention, to, um, to recommend the $526,978 of capital expenditures budgeted for 2014, for the fiscal year 14.
Um, Rick, would you make the motion, and then we can discuss the motion that's on the floor, please?
I move that we approve the capital budget for fiscal year 14 of $526,978.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy with a second. Trevor, question?
Yes. Um, developmental study classroom, what is that?
Sure, um, that's a program at the high school for students with intensive special needs, um, multiply disabled students. And what this is, is an expansion of the program to include opportunities for students to have onsite, hands-on, um, practice and instruction around daily living skills. And, um, so it really expands the opportunities for, for our students to be able to be well-positioned for transitioning, and the majority of our students at this age of this, in this program, stay with us till their 22nd birthday. So, we need to really position kids well to transition out into adulthood. So, this is building out, um, an opportunity for kids to have like an apartment-like setting, um, do some, um, work-type settings within the school building.
And so, this would be retrofitting classrooms to kind of look like a condo, let's see if you go to dinner.
Yes, exactly.
Let's see if you can walk upstairs by yourself, let's see if you...
You got it.
Occupational therapy type stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rick?
One thing I should have mentioned is how we pay for this stuff. So, if you flip to the page that is, uh, looks like this page, um, it's almost the second to last page. And you can see for 20, for fiscal year 14, uh, we financed most of this, so 515 of what we're recommending for that year is financed, and 11,000 comes from special revenue funds that I'll let Rob explain. And then, down below, you can see where the actual financing comes from. A ban is of short-term borrowing, so in fiscal year 12, we borrowed $900,000. Uh, we didn't end up needing that amount, so in fiscal year 13, that got moved over to the $700,000 ban, and then we added a $310,000 ban, right, Rob, in that year, for a total of a million 10,000 of borrowing. And then, if we do everything we say in fiscal year 14, um, we'd be borrowing that 1,000, 1,525,800. And the cost of that borrowing gets allocated to the towns. Um, the last, the very last page shows that.
Rob?
I have a question about, when you say the cost of that financing gets allocated to towns, is that something that happens outside of the regional budget appropriations?
Yes, uh, the regional, uh, region assesses, it hands two assessments. One is the operating budget assessment, that we talk about when we talk about budgets, and the other is a capital, um, assessment. Um, and that is represented on this very last page. Um, when we financed the high school renovation, the middle school roof and all of that, we went out and got bonds, and the principal interest for those bonds is allocated to the member towns. Um, I was going to go on to the, tell you how, but that's more detail you need to know. But yes.
All right, so...
Maria, want to respond to that?
Yeah, I just want to jump into to say, so similar to Pelham, the town of Pelham and the town of Amherst, they support the capital needs of our physical plants, our buildings, because it's, we're a department of a town, but because we're a region, we're our own entity, and we're responsible for the, the maintenance of our physical plants, for the middle school and high school. So, that's why we have, other people would be part of the, uh, what is it called for the town of Amherst, that JCPC?
JCPC, yeah.
In Pelham, we've just started having a Pelham capital plan, so it's paid through there, and it's clear through the town, however, but the region has to have those, those pieces that are, um, having board retrieval problems.
Assessment?
The assessments, um, back to, but separate from the appropriated budget. Does that help a little bit?
Yes, and if you look at the JCPC plan for Amherst, for instance, you'll see there's a line there that is the Amherst portion of the assessment, the assessment to Amherst, I should say, or capital, is in their capital plan. And our cap, the region's capital assessment to Pelham, say, is in Pelham's, Pelham's capital plan. So, now, how does, how does one get in there? Okay. So, when we go out to a ban, and I'll be coming back a little later to get this banned for this year, um, the school committee of the regional school committee get votes to approve to borrow X amount, okay? Then we have, I think it's five days to let the towns know, the treasures of the towns know, that the school committee has voted to do this. So, now the towns have, uh, window opportunity to call a, um, a special town meeting if they want, to have the citizens vote up or down whether they support borrowing that money by the region, thereby occurring their assessment. Or, they can let the window lapse and agree to the plan by abstention. So, you can't snooker a, a town with, you know, burdening them with debt they don't know about. There is a process where they have to acknowledge, and if they desire, vote on incurring that debt on behalf of the region.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry if I'm confused, but I just, I guess I missed the part, and I'm on the JCPC, where the regional, where the regional district assessments for capital is already included in the five-year JCPC Amherst plan?
Yeah, I think it's in the very bottom part. It's, I mean, that, the latest one that would have been voted on was years ago, when we refinanced, I think, the roof.
Okay, and then, what I was leading up to, my final point is, okay, so if we're asking to approve a capital plan this year of half a million dollars, but we're planning next year to ask to approve one of 1.7 million and the year after of 2.5 million?
Um, so, looking at projections of XY15 and 16, well, right now, those are like lists of things we think we should do. Nobody's approved doing them yet, okay?
Right.
And we could push them off as, we've only done this for two years, and we're already pushing stuff off, um, as we do in JCPC as well, because, you know, what can you do? How much can you do in one year? So, I imagine that some of these things will get pushed off even further. Yeah. They're just all kind of piling up into a drift right now.
Rob, follow-up, Rob, you're set?
No, I'm all set.
Trevor?
I wanted to make sure I understood right between these bans. Ban one was 900,000, and did I understand right that 200,000 was used, and then that was rolled over into the next year? Did I hear that right?
Actually, um, that ban was to cover the, uh, district's portion of the windows replacement project in the middle school, okay? And, uh, we get authorization to borrow, I think it was 1.2 million, okay? But, the MSBA has changed how they reimburse, so now, we don't have to front, upfront pay for the windows, and they get reimbursed later. They now have this new program where they can reimburse you along the way. So, as we get, and it's a new program, so I was quite sure how it worked, but it worked really well, actually.
Because we said...
And as we went along, um, we discovered that we didn't have to borrow 1.2 million, we borrowed up to 900,000, okay? And that was plenty, because the cash flow was not as acute as it used to be. Nice program. So, by the end of the, by the end of the project, um, the project came in under budget, okay? And so, what we have left to carry on that project is only 700,000. So, when it came time to renew that ban for that project, we only needed 700,000, that's why it went from nine to seven.
All right.
Now, there's a second ban there for 310, and we'll be coming back to you in a month or so to get authorization to borrow up to that much in bands, so we can pay for some of these other projects that are now coming along.
So, the, the other projects that are coming along will equal the 310 from the last ban?
Mm-hmm.
We'll still have, I'm, I'm asking, I want to make sure I understand this right, the 700,000 that we, that got rolled over from the ban we didn't use, plus the 300, plus more money to pay for this wish list of things that we want to do.
Right.
Moving on.
Yeah, so the 900,000 was what we had to borrow to do the, the windows project.
Do the windows.
Now that it's all done, we don't need 900 anymore, so we bought, renewed it for 700,000. So, an important detail, a ban is good for one year, and then you have to renew it.
I think that's what it is.
Right? So, 900 expired after a year, we went to renew it, didn't need to renew 900, renewed 700.
Got you. So, this is year to year asking for the same money you already borrowed?
Yep.
I got you, that's what I was...
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Not hearing any, then, um, I'm going to take a vote. All of those in favor of approving the capital plan as presented, please raise your hand. All those opposed, abstentions. So, there's one abstention. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to the next item under the FY14 budget, we have the fee schedule, and, um, Principal Mark Jackson and Athletic Director Rich Ferro are both here, if you want to step forward, gentlemen. Um, Rick, would you like to, um, suggest we make a motion on, um, the overall athletic fee and then the proposed increases, or?
We could either vote on the whole thing, or we could split it up into three parts like we did at the Budget Subcommittee.
Why don't we do it the way we did at the Budget Subcommittee?
Okay, right. So, um, we, we discussed this at the last two Budget Subcommittee meetings, and there's really three different sections here. One is, uh, one is, um, the preschool, uh, increase in fee. Uh, the other is the, that line, it's full fee new Alpine and ice hockey, and then the third one is all the other sports, um, fees which show 0% increase. Um, so, we had a lot of discussion about all of these. Um, there was concern expressed about the large increase in, in actually new category of fee, with that full fee three category, a large increase there, up to $347 a year. The reason for that is just the expense of having a rink for hockey and the transportation expense for alpines skiing makes these sports that much more expensive than the other sports. So, this is what was being recommended to us. Uh, concern was certainly expressed about the fact that this makes those even more out of reach of low-income kids, um, who might want to do these sports. Although, um, these are on sliding scales, so the lowest fee, um, boy, that got handed out to us, but the lowest fee is what percent of the top fee?
20%.
20% of the top fee. So, it goes down, you know, decreases by 80% of this top fee, but still, um, there was concern expressed about that. Um, there was concern expressed by, on sports, state of sports, there was concern expressed by me, only I think that maybe we should do more than 0% instead of doing, you know, a big increase every few years. Um, and then, there wasn't too much concern expressed about the preschool, um, because we're still under, under the cost of the competition in town and provide as good or better service, and it's something we want to, it's something that's nice to have at high school, both for the staff that would leave their kids there, but also for the students who, who work there. Um, so, um, so let me just say what we voted on these things. For the preschool, um, increase of the 9% there, we voted five to zero in favor of that. For the 0% increase on all sports, except for the full fee three for Alpine, skiing and ice hockey, we voted four to zero with one abstention. Debbie couldn't vote on that, so that's why she abstained. And then for, I'm sorry, we voted three to one and one abstention. Um, and then for the full fee three increase for the Alpine skiing and ice hockey, we voted four to zero with one abstention.
Um, one, I'm sorry.
I just handed out. I include the fee schedules. I think for procedural purposes, why don't we, um, take each one of these one at a time? Uh, people can address, um, their questions and comments to each of these items. Um, so I'm going to request, Rick, that you begin with the no fees for, um, the majority of the sport, athletic, um, teams?
Okay, I move that we have no increase on all sports, um, except for the full fee three, which is Alpine skiing and ice hockey.
Is there a second? Rob?
Second.
Uh, any questions or discussion? Lawrence, is it?
No.
No.
I have one quick question that won't matter that much, but why is basketball a fee one rather than a fee two sport? I'm just curious.
Has to do with the length of their season. They play a full 20-game schedule versus, uh, something like, um, cross-country, who is not going to use as many, uh, trips on the buses and things like that. Um, so it really has to do with transportation officials, and, um, we also have to have event staff at those games, which we don't have to have at a lot of our other sports.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, then I'll take a vote. All of those in favor of, um, the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Rick. Um, move on to the preschool, please.
Okay, sure. I move that we increase the preschool at their, at the high school to 588, that's a 9% increase.
Okay, second?
Second.
Catherine, seconds. Any comments or questions? Lawrence?
So, Rick, is there a sense of how do we stack up with the market? And then I have a follow-up, too.
Okay.
So, apparently we stack up very well.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh, less expensive, and I think one of the, um, one of the, uh, important things to keep in mind is, not only, um, is it less expensive, you know, from a, from a consumer point of view, but the hours are really great.
Yeah.
It's 7:30 to 4:00, as opposed to, you know, shorter, uh, number of hours, so, um, and of course, the opportunity for students to participate and do internships in the preschool.
Yeah. So a second question I have, just, just to get a little insight into the deliberations, uh, what jumped out at me was just the perception of, there was, bless you, there was a large fee hike at once, and I wasn't sure if there was any consideration given to maybe spreading it out over two years. I don't know how that would fit in with the goal about building up. I understand that the notion of building up some kind of money, you know, as, like a little mini personal capital plan, it almost sounds like, for equipment.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can answer a piece of it, and I don't know if Mark wants to jump in. I think when we looked at really what the increase per family was, it was not a substantial increase. What was it per hour was?
It was $4 per day.
Yeah, $4 per day, and it's well below, in, well below, in, below what most of the preschools were charging. So at this point, the, the large consideration for us is that, a number of years ago, we made a decision, when we had to make significant budget cuts, that the staff were no longer considered, um, on the appropriated budget, that if they were going to maintain this opportunity for students at the high school, it really needed to be an opportunity for students, and therefore, the funds needed to cover fully the cost of the program. So absent in this increase, we would be not able to fully cover, um, the costs of the program, so I don't know what you, yeah.
Lawrence, I would just add one thing, that, um, last year, we needed a new toilet in the bathroom in the preschool.
Yeah.
And we had a big moron steal, just to do that modest degree of upgrade.
Right.
Which begged the question, are we prepared to continue to improve the program rather than just barely making the daily maintenance? So new mats, new books, those kinds of things. So, given that we're below market value, this is a moderate increase that gives us some cushion to continue to invest in the quality of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Opposed carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, last one, um, Rick, make a motion quick.
I, I move that we, uh, create a new full fee three category for Alpine skiing and ice hockey that would be $347.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Is there a discussion? Michael?
Um, I don't have clear thoughts on this, but I have some thoughts nonetheless. Um, I'm conflicted, I actually don't know what I'm going to do in terms of voting. On the one hand, I think as is talked about, it, it's more expensive, so therefore, it's less accessible to families that have less income, um, so it makes it more of an exclusive sport. So that's, you know, troublesome from an access perspective, not funding it, clearly underfunded, and that's, on the other hand. But I think for me, what makes it complicated, it's nested in our previous conversation from a few months ago about late start, um, because these were two of the three teams that were highlighted in terms of how they would be inconvenienced in terms of the late start. Um, and bundled together, it seems like they're, they just sort of start standing out for different reasons from the pack. Whether it's because we can't shift schools' time schedules because will negatively impact students that are participating, but on the other hand, we're creating new rates and looking at costs that are outliers to the rest of the teams, the many teams that we're offering. So, I just have a problem with that. I think we have to sort of look at the fact that we have two teams that are becoming outliers. And what does that mean, given that we're public education? I'm not necessarily saying for or against, but I think it really sort of, if we're having two conversations in a row within a consist, within a few months, that are focused on two of the three teams, that's, it's just something that's, we should look at from a policy perspective. And I don't know how I think about the price, so.
Trevor? No, yes?
Michael stole a lot of my thunder. I was, I was going to say, come here.
You're cool, too.
Yeah, but you're cool. Michael stole a lot of my thunder. I was, I was pretty much going to say, you know, as much as I can appreciate all sports, um, this just seems extraordinary to pay this much money, um, for extracurricular activity and be so different from everybody else, and not really in line. And he took the words right out of my mouth, he's an outlier. And, um, I don't know if in good conscience, I would, I would, I would say that we want to get any families, whether they can afford it or not, to, you know, dole out this money in the, the circumstance where everybody doesn't have access to that. And that's all. Just raised eyebrows there.
Rob?
I just have two comments and then a quick question for the athletic director. My comment, just in response to Michael, it was the Nordic ski team that was the issue with the late start, not the Alpine, because the Alpine ski team skis at Berkshire East and they're lighted, so they could have a late start and still potentially ski.
There was travel involved?
It was both.
Travel, oh, okay.
It was both, yeah.
Okay.
Because of when the, the meets started for, the races started for Alpine.
Okay. And, and then my question was, um, with these teams, with this fee, is there any equipment included for the athletes, for instance, the hockey team?
No, not at this point. We don't supply any, any, um, equipment for, for any of our teams, other than our football team at this point.
Other than the football?
Yeah, and that's mostly equipment that we already have. In terms of the ice hockey fee, I'll, I'll give a little background. So, uh, we've had a deal with Amherst College for the past decade, I would say, where we paid, uh, $4,400 a season for ice time. Uh, went last year and talked to their athletic directors and got them to reduce that down to 2,200, um, for this upcoming year and hopefully thereafter. Compare, comparatively to other programs, um, upwards of $10,000 to $12,000 in ice time costs for most of your high school hockey teams in Western Massachusetts. So we get a, a very good deal, um, being at Orrinkin with Amherst College. And then in comparison to what athletes, if a, if a player was to not play for the high school team, and then they were to go and play for, uh, a midget team at the, at the youth level, um, they would be paying upwards of, for just that winter portion, they would be paying upwards of, like, a thousand dollars, um, you know, if they weren't going to do the high school. So, realistically, this is probably the best deal on hockey that just about any public school kid gets in Massachusetts at this point.
And then my one final comment, and I was actually going to make that same comment about the cost of private hockey team, is that also there's, I, I doubting that you're getting very many walk-on ninth-grade hockey players who've never played hockey before, so they've, they've paid quite a bit of cost year by year by year.
Yeah.
To become a hockey player.
Yeah, hockey's definitely one of those sports that.
In the first place.
We, we rarely have somebody who comes out for the hockey team who's in, in ninth grade. Um, I've been involved with the hockey program since I was in high school here in the early 90s, and I'd say I know of maybe two or three kids who started playing when they were in ninth grade over that period of time. And Alpine has a similar, because you need a, a certain level of racing ability to go out for the Alpine team.
So it would, it would be my, my last comment, it'd be my hope that we wouldn't say, this seems too expensive, so we'd rather cut the program, especially for athletes who have been paying higher fees than this to do these sports in their youth up until the point where they reach high school. So, I would, I would vote in favor of it, to, to be able to keep the programs.
Amy?
I was going to talk about the same thing, that, um, when you pay privately, it's much more expensive, um, and I would like to see it be able to continue, um, because it is much cheaper than you'd pay on your own. And I was wondering what kind of, I know we have the reduced lunch and the free lunch, is there any kind of scholarship or other ways that students, um, can get access who don't get reduced lunch, but, you know, I don't know if there's any programs like that?
We don't have anything currently, uh, in terms of a program like that, um, but we don't limit access based on somebody not having the finances, so if somebody comes at the beginning of the season and says, Mr. Fair, I don't have this money, or they don't have the fee right away, we don't pull them off the court or off the field or off the ice because they don't have that money. Um, we try and work with, with the families to, to figure out a payment plan, or, um, occasionally, you know, we'll waive a certain number of, of fees during a season. Um, you know, if somebody even, is it a full fee normally, but they've had something go on in their family during that particular part of the year and they can't pay, you know, we're not going to limit access based on that.
Trevor?
Just a quick question. These fees, um, are defraying some of the transportation costs? And what else, what might these fees go towards?
For ice hockey, it's for the ice time, because we have that $2,200 ice time fee.
Ice time.
And then for, um, Alpine skiing, most of our away teams only have, uh, an, on average of eight away trips. Alpine has, uh, upwards of 16, because their practice is actually at Berkshire East. And then they're also gone for a longer period of time than most, most of the teams are. So their transportation costs, uh, end up much higher.
Higher, because they have to go further, got to pay more, gas and all that kind of stuff, that's why.
Yep, exactly.
I'm trying to get my mind around why the cost is.
Yep.
Rick? Not specifically related to the rates or anything, but we had a good discussion in the committee, I think prompted by Catherine, about trying to do more outreach to low-income kids, so that, the rates are really a lot lower, but they may not want to come forward, may not even know about them, who knows what. So, I think it was agreed that we would try to do more outreach to these kids, to, and their families, to make sure they know about the lower rates.
Catherine?
Yeah, I just, I, um, there was a lot of discussion in the subcommittee, and, um, I am going to vote for the increased fee, um, because I'm, I think, um, there are other factors that play into, um, the, the school committee supporting athletics, and, um, I do want to support athletics, um, and, uh, I don't want the community at large to feel like, you know, we're not behind, um, trying to figure out ways for kids to participate in any sport that they want to participate in that the high school offers. But, I, in terms of what Rick was saying, and, and Rich, what you said, in terms of kids who cannot afford it and have to, uh, come and speak with you, one of the concerns that, um, was expressed in the subcommittee meeting was that there's no formal, um, mechanism that allows kids to, uh, like with free and reduced lunch, Mark was explaining that you swipe a card or you punch in your number and, and you're anonymous. But, um, the current structure at the high school requires that kids identify themselves as being unable to afford something. And, um, I think that puts kids in a very difficult situation, and so, when we think about accessibility, um, uh, even if we can make it work for kids, um, I think it limits accessibility because adolescents aren't prone to putting themselves out there and being different in any way. And, um, that concerns me, and I think the only other thing that I said, and, and something that I think we should think about as a committee, and, you know, probably, in some ways as a community, but I can only s- speak to the committee, um, is that these are sports that require a lot of money privately, and it requires kids to start at an early age. Um, and we are a public in, institution, and, um, so, the notion that, yes, it is a reality that there are a lot of kids in our community who can't start these sports at age six, seven, eight, nine, because they can't afford it, um, but I'm not sure that the high school, um, as a public institution, should perpetuate that, by continuing to offer sports that all kids can't participate in, not because of lack of talent, but because of lack of resources. So.
Before I pick, Michael, I wasn't saying anything, no. Michael, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of follow-up thoughts. Um, one's a quick, easy question. For the Alpine ski team, how many kids are involved?
Last year, we had eight. So far this year, we have, well, it's going to depend on whether we're allowed to have middle school students participating this year, about anywhere from 15 to 19, actually, this year. Much higher level.
Okay, so, combined, less than 40. 20-plus, okay. Um, so I guess, two thoughts that I have, um, one was just what, actually, the two things that you brought up, Catherine, I was going to say, one is, I, it, it seems essential that we have a formalized process for getting sliding scale, um, that students or households, it seems like, even if it's uncomfortable, I would say that's a percentage of people who would even get to the uncomfortable part, because they'd rule themselves out and say, we can't afford it, and I don't see a pathway forward. There's no process that actively says, come forward and do X, Y, and Z. And so I think it's essential that it be formalized. And then, you know, at least you got a pathway, and then people can deal with their emotional, you know, hesitancy about coming forth, but I think we at least have to have that, so that it's clear and, um, objective. And I, the other part, I am torn about the, the role of, I mean, clearly, there's a value to academics and, uh, to athletics, and I think we've, you know, talked about it tonight, we talked about it last year, I think it came up as well, um, that budget cuts have an implication, you know, and so this is way of having kids be physical in an age of obesity. But, there's lots of sports that are privately funded. I mean, I could think of my kid, and there's kids who do horses, and there's, you know, there's lots of stuff that kids and families do that are privately funded, that at some point, the public system doesn't pick it up, because it started out being private. And so I think that's this conversation, which is to really look at, not history, what have, what have we historically funded? But what's the role in, in an era where we're looking at constrained resources and we're trying to sort of do equitable, higher-quality education? And that's the question for us to be considering. And so, it is a better deal, you know, if the, if the public system picks it up, it's a better deal, but, you know, would we say we should have horseback riding, because you can get it cheaper here? Um, you know, that's, I think that's the frame that we have to be looking at it going forward. So, it's not about the pricing, but it's a, it's a different slant on the conversation with the commercial.
Anyone else in the committee? Um, just, before we vote, I, I'd just like to say that, um, any conversation involving fees, to me, violates a principle of, as I mentioned at the committee, subcommittee meeting, my idea of free and public education. Anytime you create obstacles to any public, um, experience, voting, for example, you curtail, um, the participation in some manner, some form, whether it's overt or covert. Having said that, I think it's important this evening for this committee to send a strong message to the larger community, both the athletic community and the larger, uh, community, if you will, of the four towns, that this committee is committed to taking whatever steps are necessary to preserving the athletic program in all of its, um, substance. And I think we can do that by, um, approving this particular motion, not because these two particular, um, athletic teams are in and, in and of themselves more important than any others, but they sort of symbolize the crisis that the athletic program is in, I believe. Um, and that's the question that we need to be focusing on. It's not just these two teams, it's how we fund, um, in a public, free context, participation on the athletic field for. on the athletic field for all students who want to participate. And that's a conversation that I think the larger community must have, and we must be involved in that. And we need to send a message to that larger community that we are very much in the forefront, as a school committee, of participating in that conversation. And I don't think this will be the last time that we will be asked to make a formal statement to the community at large, that we are committed to looking and even considering outside the box at ways of creating a new financial paradigm, if you will, for the athletic program of the school district. So even though I'm, in principle, opposed to any fee structure, I see this as, in some ways, a symbolic vote to the rest of the community, how seriously the problem is and how seriously we, as a committee, take it. So I'll vote in favor of the motion. Michael.
That's a teeny comment. It strikes me, though, we would vote in favor of this, and seeing it as a way of sort of embracing and supporting athletics, that it's just worth recognizing that, on the face of it, there's definitely people who look at it and say, you're increasing it by 43%. You know, that is a whole different perspective, you know, so we're looking at it from a sort of embracing perspective. But it's just worth noting that, while good intention, can be looked at from a different perspective as well, that, you know, you've just bumped up the prices yet again, and you keep doing it, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Mark.
So I'm trying to read the tea leaves here, and I can't quite tell where this is gonna go, so I stood up. I hope you can tell that we have a very capable athletic director, who's been able to advance the financial conversation, and I'm just highlighting that dimension of his job in a very significant way. So we're having a much more sober conversation about funding in athletics as a result of his efforts. But what got me up was, I don't want, as we go to the fee around these two, the fee increase around these two subjects, to lose the ability to put back, to pull back and contextualize the larger conversation over the last year around athletics. So we got into this game a year and a half ago, because we were awash in red ink, right? Let's make no mistake about this, we were, this was smoke and mirrors, we were underwriting athletics, right? And so when Rich got together with Sean in Rob's office, and they all had to roll up their pants, because the red ink just kept rising and rising. So I want everybody to be very aware that we have established enrollment triggers for sports. We have a proposal, we'll be here shortly, part of Rich's conversation with Kip was to get the sponsorship proposal in front of you, and talk about the ways in which the boosters are mobilizing themselves to increase revenue in a way that hopefully with the community is a win-win. We've tried to really work Amherst College to reduce their fees, because, so I want to set that, this particular fee increase against the fact that we lowered the total cost of what we're trying to underwrite, right? If he hadn't done that legwork, we'd be coming to you for a much bigger fee, to, a bigger fee request. So I want to sit down, but I want to say that, and I guess I'm following Kip here, that we're at a critical moment with athletics. It's at a point right now where we can pay as we go. I want everybody to note that that's a huge accomplishment, given where we've been in fairly short order. And at the same time, and I wish everybody could have heard the conversation, we had the subcommittee about the larger questions that are still in front of us, about being a free and public institution, and our complicity in the fee structure as the gatekeeping thing that allows kids to break a sweat after school or not, right? And so there's a part of me that thinks, that's just a fact of our life, and we have to play the cards that are dealt with. And there's another part of me, again, following Kip's lead, that wants to push back on that. But for now, and I'm going to use the paradigm language, given the current paradigm level, given all the other responsible moves that we tried to make, this is one that also makes sense to me, right? If we have a larger conversation in the paradigm shifts, we come back and we have a different answer. But for right now, given the strength and sobriety of the model, given the community support of the model, I would encourage you to support it.
Thank you, Mark. Last go around. Trevor.
So for this paradigm, and I understand the urgency of the moment that Kip and our principal is describing, at what point, or would it be, you know, at the end of this year, that we decide that from this point on, this is how we will formalize the new resources that our capable athletic director has got for us, the lowered prices at the rink and community support? Put that on into a pool and formalize a way to open this up? My question is, will there be a report or a plan, or is that in the process? And, you know, you do yeoman's work, I always congratulate you, shake your hand every time I see you. I know, I hope I'm not asking you to do anything extra, but I'm asking, is there that on the horizon? Have we already started to think about how that's going to look, so that if the yeoman's work you've done turns out to start getting in red ink two years from now, that the efforts won't be just to help the people who have been doing athletics from kindergarten up, but now the effort is opened up, that any work that goes is now leveraged and meets the criteria of what Kip wants, a free and public education for anybody that gets to it? In other words, I'm asking, what would the plan be if this was voted up now, to make it different in the future?
Can I?
Please.
Okay. So that whole part of the conversation, of this afternoon's conversation in the subcommittee about the bigger conversation that's looming on the horizon, right? This is just out of the oven, it's still warm. So your question, Trevor, is, do I have a plan? I do not. I have an interest, right? I don't have a plan, right? Right now, my narrow interest is to get over this particular hump. So he's free and clear to go, to continue to work his magic. Long-term, right, I think we try to be very clear, since we came before you last year, that, that even with the stability that Rich and the parents on the boosters that he's been working with, even the stability that he has brought, hasn't resolved the larger question, which is that we now have 70% of the money in athletics that underwrites the entire athletic program, 70% of that money is in revenue, and is not in appropriations. Eight years ago, it was the exact opposite. Over the last eight years, the proportion has changed, right? And so the fact that we're, we have 70% of the funds in athletics coming from revenue, straight lines directly to the concern about fees, because without fees, and here it is, without fees, we cut the offerings in athletics at least by half, right? So when you're looking for a plan for something of that enormity, Trevor, I don't have a plan for you right now. I have an interest in thinking about it, because that's the next logical step on the road that we've been on for the last year, right? Because we don't buy balls and bats anymore. And that's both literally true and a metaphor for the larger headache. But so I'd like to come back to you, but for right now, I don't have one.
As chair, if I may, I just want to thank both of you, and Rich, you in particular, for all the work that you've done in keeping the ship afloat. Extraordinary work. And I just hope you recognize the acknowledgement.
I appreciate it.
I'm going to go to the vote, I think we've talked this through. So the motion is to approve, is to approve the increase in fees for Alpine skiing and ice hockey. All those in favor of the increase, please raise your hand. All those opposed, abstention. One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick, for your presentation. And Mark and Rich, thank you very, very much. Thank you. And keep us informed about your progress. We'll lack their.
Thank you both. Get some rest.
Thank you.
December 11th, is that?
That would work.
That would work, yeah.
That'd be perfect. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I got it, I have it on the chart already, that's what I put it on, the 11. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Good night.
So we just need to vote the budget.
Okay, thank you. That was a good discussion. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, and I'm going to ask.
Yes, just a quick vote.
Quick vote?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
So at our last meeting, we went over the identified budget priorities, which are consistent with the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans. And at that time, there was some prioritizing from the committee, but I didn't receive any changes, and I think most people at that point articulated that they were comfortable with these as some general budget guidelines for us to begin our work, which will be coming in front of you very, very soon, within the next month or so. So I guess for tonight, we would love to have a vote of these guidelines as some general parameters of our priorities for the budget process to begin.
And I might add that this is a document that we've all had an opportunity to engage and make contributions to. So it's not like any of this should be a mystery or a surprise to anyone. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the budget priority document as presented, and then we can have a conversation about it.
Move we approve the five-point budget priorities that we have before us.
Second. And Lawrence, a second. Are there any comments or questions?
Excellent. Thank you all.
I must confess, I'm shocked, not hearing or seeing any hands, hearing any voices. All those in favor of accepting the budget priority document as presented, please raise your hand. And opposed, it's accepted unanimously. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We do not have any gifts this evening to accept, so we can strike that item. And so I'm going to move right on to the subcommittee reports, and I'm going to ask if Shabazz would share with us his experience at the MAS, MASC conference. Shabazz?
Very well. So I will pass to you all programs, I suggest, if one wants to stay with someone from the region, and someone from Amherst, you can take a look at this. You can see some of the things. I arrived at the joint conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's 48th Annual Joint Conference. I arrived on the Wednesday in Hyannis, and it was, you know what they're saying there, outgrowing the facility that it's in or not, but you'd go into a lot of rooms, and it was standing room only, it was quite, but then others are saying the attendance has been falling off. So I'm not sure exactly what to know, what to say from that, if it's just a facilities issue, or that things are getting smaller or not. But it looked robust to me, from what I can gather. Of course, you know as a background, or speaking to the public that might be tuning in to this, these school boards or school committees association arose during the Second World War. The National Association was formed in 1940, and Massachusetts came quickly on its heels, not a few years later, with its own statewide conference and an association. It is designed to help school committees, school boards, work together, collaborate together to learn how to be more effective. And I'm sure for us as a region, we all are very concerned and invested with being an effective school committee for the sake of all our children. So the theme overall of this year's conference was leadership, learning, and empowerment in an age of accountability. And some of the key kinds of things that, topics, included how our schools are doing and college readiness, preparing our young people for college, how we're doing in using data, how we're doing in our financial work, financial reviews. Also, very importantly, virtual education, blended learning, online learning, to our IT directors. A lot of discussion going in that area. Cost-saving strategies, nutritional regulations, school law, election update, large plenary that was looking at how things, what the election meant. Educator evaluation, superintendent evaluations. And despite my colleague kind of snickering earlier, when the tweeter, the, was brought up, social media. Social media was brought up as a major, as a major topic. And so I was there from Wednesday all the way through to Saturday. Saturday, had to stay all the way to Saturday, because Saturday was the really mandatory part of it. The new member orientation was 9:00 AM to 11:45. This was a key session for new and veteran members that focused on changes to the open meetings laws, conflict of interest, and public record laws and requirements with field directors. Jim Hardy, Michael Gilbert, Patricia Correa was all a part of that. I actually had walked in, they switched rooms around, and I was actually in the superintendent evaluation room, which was actually for superintendents, until I got straight that something had happened, and I wasn't in new member orientation. But it was interesting to see a lot of superintendents out, and a lot of discussion on the whole superintendent evaluation, and setting SMART goals, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and tracking what's happening with that. So there was quite a bit of that. The overall, one final thing I would mention, and I brought back goodies besides the program that I brought out, but they gave us this, and you all might have gotten this over the summer at the session at Amherst College where Glenn Kucher came down. I couldn't be at that, out of the country, but I got mine to have. I also received the Selected Massachusetts General Laws 2012. I don't know if you all have those, but they say they mail them to the central office. If you don't, you can get your own hard copy, not just have to be online. There was an elaborate vendors thing, and they gave you like a little bingo thing, that if you went around and got people to stamp that you had come over to their table and let them give you a little spiel about what they do, you would then turn in those cards, and there was a big raffle. I didn't win anything in the raffle, but I did go around to many of the groups, from architects, school architects, all saying, let us come to Amherst, we can fix your schools, we can fix your roofs, we can, you know, build things for you that'll be so green and so beautiful. To the lawyers, yes, I didn't see Jenny Tate, the legendary Jenny Tate, but I did meet members of her law firm, as well as other firms, saying, we can do better than they do for some of your legal needs. So there was quite a bit of robust capitalistic competition in the vendors hall, so we can think about that next time we come around. We don't have to throw our hands up, there's no one else in this, around that can do what anybody else does. The other key kind of session, staying in or going out, should you outsource special ed, I have the slide presentations from that. There was quite a bit on regionalization, that, some interesting sessions on that. Laws, new Massachusetts legislation dramatically affects student suspension and expulsions, education alert. The, it's actually out from, was a document out from Murphy Hess, Tumi, and Lahane. So it was really quite, quite interesting, quite fascinating. But I'd say one thing that really came away from thinking about a lot of this myself, was, you know, what we might do over the course of the year to assess ourselves as a school committee. How well are we functioning? How up are we on things as a school committee in order to, you know, better understand? And finally, I would say this, is that I will send a little note to Glenn Kucher and the people there. One thing, and I was actually, it was at, I think, maybe on Friday at the lunch or something, I was walking in, and someone flagged me over to, come, please, and sit with us, I saw you last night, you're, you know, I, you know, I know this is not a very diverse place, and I feel terrible about it. And he described himself as a French, a French, he was a Caucasian man, but he's French, but he was very welcoming to me, and, you know, I haven't seen you here before, and we got to talking, I can't remember what district he was representing, somewhere in the east, eastern part of our state. But, you know, he was bringing out the lack of diversity in the program, the lack of diversity in the keynote speakers, the lack of diversity in some of the topics of, you know, dealing with this, with the, at the conference. So that wasn't me, that came from someone else. But it's something that I think I will note to Glenn Kucher. And finally, I mentioned at a previous school committee meeting, one of the Friday general session, the keynoter was Amira Levinson, who is a political philosopher, who writes about civic education, multiculturalism, and youth empowerment. Her latest book is No Citizen Left Behind, Harvard University Press, 2012, in which she argues the United States suffers from a civic empowerment gap that is as shameful and anti-democratic as the academic. that is as shameful and anti-democratic as the academic achievement gap targeted by No Child Left Behind. She shows how schools can help address the civic empowerment gap by teaching collective action, openly discussing the racialized dimensions of citizenship, and provoking students by engaging their passions against contemporary injustices through action civics. She is interested in questions of educational justice. A new project on justice in schools combines philosophical analysis and school-based case studies to illuminate the complex dimensions of evaluating, achieving, and teaching justice in schools. Very interesting speaker with her degrees from Yale and PhD from Oxford. A lot of her point was juxtaposing how she saw civics being done in good old England and how it is coming back here to New England where we're lagging, where we don't do well in encouraging a sense of civics and civic empowerment. But what was most interesting for me was afterwards during the Q and A, the speakers that got a chance to speak were, really didn't take the discussion in a very good direction. Some were pointing out how there was no American flag in the room and that if we're not, you know, having the flag and being patriotic, then what do we, what are we talking about with civics? Another one got up talking about in the Q and A how, you know, you can get these kids too riled up with all this civics empowerment and well, there are problems in our schools, you know, because the kids today lack a spiritual foundation. And therefore, we can't teach them to be too democratic. We'll just create more problems. So it was kind of, I had to kind of go at that point. But that was, that was, that's basic little summary during the question.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any comments or questions, Shabazz?
I just want to thank you for that summary. I feel like I didn't, now I know exactly what happened. I feel like that was a good synopsis.
Well, and I never went to any of those, the vendors or the booths other than to get a free umbrella. But I didn't go and talk to any of the people. So, you know, I give you something there for going and letting them schmooze you and see what they have to say. It was, there were a lot of people, a lot of people.
Some incredible people with the nutrition stuff. I know we've got some things to look at with that. But wow, they're doing some interesting, some interesting things to make lunch and breakfast for our students more appealing and healthy.
I'd love to hear if you had some connections there. I'd love to have that information. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Shabazz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, one piece that you shared with us, I'd like to pull out and request of Maria to put it on the agenda for three chairs. That would be school committee self-evaluation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let's have a conversation about when that might take place and how.
Could I ask, Shabazz, did they give you a rubric to use?
I think I might have something here.
That'd be helpful, too. Thanks if you would run.
I think if the three chairs discuss that first and then bring some idea force to the committee, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, they already create something that just makes it easier.
Thank you again, Shabazz.
Yeah, thanks.
The, any other comments or questions for Shabazz before we move on? Okay, to the policy subcommittee, the last time we met, we had very good conversations about policies, IGA, IL, and class size. We are not in a position, obviously, to see you to present you with anything. I don't think we're really being in a position to present you with anything concrete to look at and consider until January. We're meeting again on the 19th of December. So not meeting until then, we're just not going to have anything until January. Those are the items that we're working on. And then the homework assignment, in addition to that, was for the members of the subcommittee to look at all of the pre-1993 policies for consideration of whether to consider reviewing and/or revising those pre-93 policies. So that's the direction that we're going in. Any comments or questions about that? Anyone on the subcommittee want to chime in? Thank you. Calendar, Maria?
Yeah, I have for our next meeting, the next regional meeting, which is December 11th. And this is where we really start with jumping into the budget process. So we'll be coming forward with the preliminary financial projections with a whole host of, you know, backup data. So we'll be getting our first kind of look at where we're sitting for this year. That's the primary large topic. We also will be having a conversation around school choice. We'll be having the course proposals from the high school. So Mark will come forward with that. And then Rich would also like to be considered for the sports packet, which is about the, help me with the language. It's about the...
He's having conversations with, well, people who are interested in engaging community businesses for their financial support of the athletic program. And that would be part of a much, as we referenced earlier, a part of a larger conversation about just looking at the financial structure, paradigm, whatever you want to call it. So he'll be bringing something for that preliminary conversation on the 11th.
So we do have a fairly, you know, two topics specific to the high school and then school choice, and then a large segment around the financial projections.
Michael, you wanted to add an item to the agenda?
I did, I had a question.
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just clarification on the choice. We vote in June whether we want to be choice. So this is more feeding to the budget process?
Yeah, and I think it starts the conversation because we have to vote actually in January if we're going to continue choice, is kind of the trajectory of how we go about doing that so that we can think about, I think, the revenue piece connected to the budget.
So January...
But we don't, we vote to, yes, we're going to be a choice district.
In January?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's how we've done. And then we...
We go, you have to do it by June, so we're always...
Yeah, because we end up going out to advertise slots by January. We want, because people are already calling. So we try to get, you know, that information out in January.
So here's the vote.
But so next, our next meeting is just a discussion.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments or questions about the calendar? Michael, you want the agenda, future agenda item?
Yeah. It actually came up again tonight. But picking up from last time when the students presented, there's the whole discussion about not feeling safe in the school climate. And I wanted to just make sure that didn't get lost in if we can schedule it sometimes. And I think given tonight's discussion, it sort of reaffirms that.
Yeah, and what I'll do is, you know, I'll try to look at what the schedule might be and where we want to put in. And I would connect that with the topic of, the wider topic of school climate and PBIS so that, you know, kind of positive behavioral supports and interventions and how, what are we trying to do at? And we may want to stay just middle school, high school, and not have it be, I'll kind of look at where we should.
As a member of the region, I'm cool with that.
Yeah, if you're, that'll work for you, right? Okay, so I will, I'll look to add that.
Thank you.
Laura?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kip. I don't know if this is necessarily something to be put on the agenda, but I would like us to consider it. And just to hear back, what would be the way that we would show support for Amherst Media? The reason I mention that is because I have, through my kids going to our schools, they have several friends who, through various involvements in Amherst Media, had formative experience and it has shaped their lives considerably. And so I was, I was just wondering, I don't envision it as something to take up a lot. I mean, but is there a draft, like a generic draft, to just have some kind of letter drawn up that speaks to the importance of Amherst Media that's played in our students and staff? I don't even know, I'm new, so I'm curious about the process.
I would like Trevor first and all.
Thank you. I was going to say, without it being on the agenda, we could just come up with a strategy and perhaps use our, whatever muscle or clout we have to write a letter to WAMICO and express our support and, what's the word, be a place where folks can rally. In other words, we can add our name to a petition and a letter of support to WAMICO, letting them know that us as constituents, you know, electric company people, value ACTV that much and we expect you to listen to us as your customers. I think that we can organize that amongst ourselves.
Rick, comments on this or?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to, and I'm not sure, I'm looking at Debbie in this, if it would require a vote, if the whole school committee as a body would like to endorse a letter. I mean, I would be happy to draft something and then the committee would have to vote it. I mean, but that doesn't preclude you, you know, doing things individually as well. But I'd be happy to draft something about the importance of Amherst Media for the schools.
Michael, on this?
Thank you. Just speaking of that.
Yeah, it's just, I support the idea. I just want, for process, since I'm new to this body relatively. My sense is that we don't, the practice is not responding to public comment is point one. And then the second one is not picking up items to take action on that haven't been on the agenda. So it seems like, and this is just a good situation to say, the request would be to put it on the agenda so that we can move to do it and then have it written. So it's a little elongated, but it seems like that would be the way to approach it.
Sure.
Good point.
I think that's great to keep the integrity.
I agree.
Rob, on this?
Yeah, just briefly, because I like the process guy. I think, you know, a member can make a motion outside the agenda if they wish, you know. And but one other way to go about it, if a member has an interest in doing that, is to, you know, go ahead and draft a letter. And I would recommend then sharing it with the chair for feedback. And then you can make a motion at a meeting saying that you'd like the entire group to vote up or down on whether we support the letter. That's just another way of doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
What Michael said about the MCN presentation jogged my memory about what I was thinking after it. And that was that it seems like the classes that are teaching racism mainly have students of color. And then like MCN is just students of color. And I feel that, you know, it's really white people that need to educate themselves about racism more than anybody. And so I was just wondering, you know, how do white kids learn about racism in the school? I'd just like to talk about that some more at some point.
Thank you. Shabazz?
Hope they're not teaching racism, or teaching anti-racism.
Yeah, that would be helpful. We absolutely should be having that conversation.
Any other future agenda items? Not hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that time already?
It is.
Rob? All those in favor of adjourned, raise your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.